This conference will now be recorded.
Call to order, the Town of Ocean Ridge Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, April 16, 2024. Let's all stand, let's do the roll call first.
Member Breiner.
Here.
Member DeBattis.
Here.
Member Morgan.
Here.
Vice Chair Berber.
Here.
And Chair Hare.
Here. Let's stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance into the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty just as strong.
Now, this is the opportunity for public comment on any items other than the item that's the agenda item, which we'll allow a time for public comment within the agenda item. So please step forward, if you have a comment. We also call this the Terry Brown moment.
Terry Brown, remember that. No, I just wanted to be sure that the rules don't change just because the board is changing, that we have public comment opportunity, then in this type of situation, we all swear in and make comments on the project, is that correct?
Yes, that should be the way, so anyone who wants to make public comment on the application should stand up in the swearing in portion.
That's good. And the other, the real reason why I wanted to come up today was to thank you, as well as all of the past members, and then, of course, the current new members. But you did a fantastic job, and all of the other folks that served prior, so I wonder on behalf of myself and others, thank you for your great service. You did a town a great service, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Any other public comment? Betty, always, the microphone's always here for you.
She likes to comment to me secretly.
Oh, thank you. Next item is the approval of the minutes from our March 26 meeting. And you have before you a draft of those minutes, are there any comments, corrections, modifications that should be made?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 26, 2024.
A second, Deb.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can you remind you guys to use your microphones?
Now, we will have item number two, which is the discussion and action item on a quasi judicial hearing on the development plan review for number three Hudson Avenue. The first thing we do is make sure there has not been any undisclosed, ex parte communication between anyone here on the commission and the applicant. Does anybody have any, had any communication with the applicant or representatives of the applicant that they need to disclose?
No, no.
Thank you, thank you. And then, this is when we have the opportunity to swear in anyone who's going to speak, so this includes members of the neighbors' community that might speak when there's comment opportunity, so please stand and be sworn in.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do swear.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and whether or not you've been sworn in, and please speak into the microphone.
My name is Lori Kramer, and I'm the homeowner of 6230 North Ocean Boulevard, which is on the corner of Hudson Avenue and A1A. For the past nine years, I have lived directly across from the parking lot house. The construction affected me because Hudson Avenue, specifically on the side of my house, where my pool, driveway, and kitchen face was used as a staging area for diesel spewing dump trucks, cement trucks, tractor trailers, and a myriad of F-150s. When that house was first under construction, so was the house to the left of me on Hudson Avenue, 6238 North Ocean. Additionally, diagonally from my house and adjacent to the parking lot house is 6275 South Ocean, the Pink House, which was undergoing a major construction during this time. In the midst of all this construction and demolition, in order to get away from the noise and mayhem, I had no choice but to move out of my house to Baton Rouge, Louisiana, for nine months in 2017. When I returned, I was still facing idling dump trucks, cement trucks on the side of my house. I would repeatedly ask them to move, when they did not, I quickly became a frequent caller of the Ocean Ridge Police Department's non-emergency line. The chief of police at the time, Hal, agreed with me that they should not be idling along Hudson Avenue, and they actually needed to be staged off-island. This did not last long. Seven years later, and the parking lot house construction is only beginning to wrap up, in addition to idling trucks, I have been inconvenienced with my power being shut off, so additional power for this monstrosity of a house could be accommodated. There are oil stains in front of my driveway from the line of tractor trailers that would offload anything from rebar cement locks, cement locks, which eventually would block my driveway. There have been many times where I couldn't move my car to leave my driveway, so I needed to place signs, line rocks, cones, and other deterrents in order to leave my own house. Once, I politely asked one of the drivers to turn off the idling truck, and when he rudely refused, the foreman of the construction site at the parking lot house told me to call the police, where he mapped off to the officer and was subsequently arrested. I feared retaliation, as he knew who I was and where I live. With the tons of dirt being dumped and the wind blowing, the debris toward my house, I had to repaint my entire house within a few years of painting it previously. My roof was filthy and was unable to clean it until the job was closely to being finished. My air conditioning ducts and filters were affected so much that my entire family suffered unexplained respiratory illness at various points in time. I read that the parking lot house owner was fine. I'm wondering when those of us neighbors who have been negatively affected and have spent thousands of dollars cleaning up their mess are going to be reimbursed. Additionally, the new owners of 6275 South Ocean, the Pink House, are currently beginning a year-long renovation despite it being renovated in 2017. After seeing four F-150s parked alongside my house yet again for this new project, I spoke to the property manager and asked the contractors, had already given me a hard time, and he assured me that there would be no parking there for the duration of this year-long renovation. I hope this is true, because the Pink House does not have any additional parking. Shortly after the interaction last week, I received a notice from the town about the new property being constructed on 3 Hudson Avenue. This property is a spec house that is being built by a contractor in Fort Lauderdale, which has already listed it for 8.9 million. The other day, I noticed my, I noticed new idling dump trucks were dumping dirt without the proper fencing parked alongside my house. One of the drivers was inspecting his oil with a two-foot-long dipstick. I asked him to move his truck, and he started screaming at me in another language. I told him I was going to call the police, and eventually he moved. I want to know what the town's plan is regarding staging these trucks off-island, cement trucks, tractor trailers, and the like cannot be left idling along a residential street. Additionally, you should, who should residents speak to regarding this recourse? Do I keep tying up the non-emergency lines so trucks can temporarily move before coming back the next day? Do I risk my safety by confronting the driver's foreman who refused to move? Why is this, why is it that we are allowing these monstrous mansions to be built, not taking into considerations that the homes have already give Ocean Ridge its character? While longtime residents die off or are forced to move, more $20 million monstrosities will be built. It's only a matter of time before the next billionaire decides to knock down the ever-evolving parking lot house to build their own trophy house, thus beginning another decade of construction. I would like to know what's going to be done about these concerns moving forward. Thank you.
Before you leave the dais.
Thank you.
Thank you, first of all, and what you asked a question, you said, what can be done? My suggestion is that you come to the town commission meeting, maybe read a shortened version of what you just did, and ask them to work on it, to give planning and zoning, because I think this group is sympathetic. All of us in Ocean Ridge have suffered from similar issues of development. We have to strike a balance, and, but if the commission gave planning and zoning the mandate to work on an ordinance that helps about staging, off-site staging, even off-island staging, that would be the way to go. So it really comes from the commission, and there's public comment time at the beginning of the commission meeting where you could speak to them for three minutes.
I just also, if there's going to be a foreman on this job, or, you know, you know, time, you know, are they going to be starting? They were there at seven the other day. You know, who's going to be enforcing this? Is it us, the residents? It's a bunch of women that have to go out and like, you know, confront these guys? And, I mean, believe me, I'm not afraid, but I'm, you know, they're getting bigger and bigger, and so are the trucks.
Yes, yes. The town is responsible for enforcement of the codes.
All right.
And the codes are eight o'clock, 8:00 AM start times, so.
But they're usually sitting there idling beforehand, you know, so, all right, I'll go to, I'll go to the meetings, but it's just, you know.
It takes us.
I gotta tell you, I mean, when I start looking at this, this is just, it's awful what's happening to this town. I live Boca, you know, the big Mediterranean-style house with, to a town that had character. Now we're becoming Boca boxes and McMansions, and we're all, I'm hedging my house in, so I don't have to look at it. I mean, it's just a shame.
It takes you and your neighbors to be squeaky wheels to get changed.
Well, we're trying, that's why we're here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Any other public comment relative to this project, number three Houston, Hudson, excuse me?
Good morning, Lisa Rittova, 4 Hudson Avenue. I've been living in this town for 34 years, and I've never had anybody, I've been blessed with not having anybody build a property right across the street from me. It's been wonderful, and of course, I'm all about progress and all the rest of it, so that's not the issue. The issue is the size of this monstrosity, and that's what it is. It's a monstrosity. It's a lovely-looking home, but it doesn't belong in our neighborhood at all. Eight thousand square feet, 6,000 under air, that's just insane in today's world, right here in Ocean Ridge. It just doesn't go with the acoustics of everything else that we have in this town. And I'm seeing these big monstrosities being built all over the place, so it's nothing new, but my biggest concern is the construction. I know the house is going to go forward, but is the construction? As Lori was just saying, with all the crew and the dump trucks, they showed up last week, and I said, what on earth is going on? There shouldn't be anything there. I called the town hall, they came back the next day to remove the dirt. If this is the way that this guy is going to be building and dealing with being on Hudson Avenue, he's already put, made an enemy out of me, because I'm going to be on his case daily. Also, what's going to happen when it is under construction? Is there going to be fencing up so dirt doesn't go everywhere? Where are they all going to park? Where are they all going to, I need to make sure that they don't encroach upon my property across the street. I'm going to have to put cones up, I'm going to have to put ropes up, I don't know what I'm going to have to do. But, you know, they've already started breaking the rules, that's to say, they're not going to break any more rules moving forward. It's just, you know, I don't know what your position is and where you can stop things that happen, and I know the commission, I go to the meetings all the time, but we need you guys, or it's the commissioners, need to stop letting these kind of homes being constructed in this town, because it's totally taking away from the charm of why we live here. As Lori said, it's turning into Boca. We don't need these big monstrosities, and often, it's just two people that are living in these huge, huge homes. And, you know, wonderful, these people have money and can afford to buy these places at $9 million. Yes, maybe it'll do well for our property values, but, you know, my house is a tear down. When I, when I sell it, somebody will knock it down to the ground, because it was built in the 70s, it's a little ranch-style, single-story home, but, you know, we have big properties on Hudson Avenue, so why they were allowed to utilize every single square millimeter on that property is beyond my comprehension, I just don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Eddie Bigum.
Eddie Bigum, 1 East Ocean Avenue. I had many concerns. One, way back when Ocean Ridge was designed, it was designed with railways, small houses. The idea was it was a family community where children could go to it in the waterway and fish in the morning, and go to the ocean and swim in the afternoon. This, number one. The right-of-way behind Hudson has been blocked at one end. We need to make sure our right-of-ways are open in case a transformer goes, trucks can't get in to replace them, and that is a necessity. This house is too big for a lot. Hudson has had a lot of problems. We finally solved the drainage problem. If you raise that hand, put a house that size, or they're going to recreate the drainage problem, you're someone who's responsible for it. Two, Hudson had a lot of problems with their road. It was not properly piled originally, so if you get in the sink, you bring a whole lot of heavy equipment and build something that size, you may have to replace all of Hudson Road. And I, I think, three, you need to be really careful not one inch on the setback. There's a 15-foot right-of-way, and then they've got the right-of-way before they, setback before they can build anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am owner, and my family lives at 1 Hudson Avenue. This project is going up, was supposedly next to, right next to my house, that my father and I built. And you've already heard what our intention was back then, and in my personal opinion, this belongs in the estate side, not in the residential area. But I have, I have spent a lot of time, and I don't want to take your time, I appreciate your time very much. Thank you, Kelly, for the online, 41 pages of documentation. Good stuff, really good. I'll give you the best I can, fast, but there are mistakes, there are misstatements, there are untrue facts plotted on the application, and I have all of that here, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but you're welcome to copy this, and you're welcome to put this in the notes. I hope to do, but anyway, here's a, here's a, here's a start on the, on those dates that I got offline. Supposedly, this is a section 6356, 3B2. It's harmonious architectural style, not truly. 3B3, should be consistent with the established neighborhood character. The or in that statement should be an and, not or architectural guidelines acceptable. It should be and, in other words, your consent, plus it follows architectural guidelines, and is the word, not or. That is, that is incorrect in the code. And 3B4 says, height and scale compatible with surrounding neighborhood. It's a real stretch, if that's, if that's, if that's true. 3C, building design, project evaluation to be based on its relationship to the surroundings. 3C5, the size in harmony with permanent neighborhood development. Again, that or should be an and, not an or. That or is a gateway to hell. I'm sorry. But and gives you your, your consent, and the board the consent, and or says, we do what we want, because it follows the guidelines, and it meets, and crosses the Ts and dots the Is. That's, again, my, my view of the and and the or. Page three, and four, it says five bedroom, two and a half baths. Well, I'll get to that later, but it's, on another page, it says two one-half baths. So there's a discrepancy in what's actually, what's actually being built. The comments were addressed by the, by, by some town staff. Windows and garage, maximum floor parking, they all meet the letter, but they don't meet the intent. That's because it had to be scaled down into, it's a cookie cutter from another area, from another development, and it, you'll see, if you take a look at my notes, and I'll tell you later, there are Delray diagrams in the plan, in the, in the request, because it's a Delray home. It's a cookie cutter that just happened to fit now that the sizing and dimensioning was, was looked at. Okay, so then there's a letter from Ingenuity Group. It's from Tara Bamber, and it's a CC to Ms. Propepi and Ms. Glabber.
We're going to ask you to wrap it up, so hit, hit the one or two points you want to.
Okay, well, the needing to be addressed, the South Florida Water Management Swale Permit, because Hudson Avenue was redesigned, repaved, and there were sewers, grates that connected to the intercoastal. And part of this plan dismisses the swale as a non-issue, because it doesn't exist. Well, it's been driven out for 25 years, and it's been destroyed pretty, pretty much, but there is a plan. Miss, I spoke with Ms. Propepi back when I was building my house 25 years ago.
Good, you're going to have to wrap it up. You've exceeded your time.
Can someone, can someone give me two minutes?
You can, you've had, you've had two, two additional minutes already. You, you're welcome to submit that into the record.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, well.
Okay, we've been generous, you've, you've had five minutes of your three minutes.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to read, I'd like to read it, so if you could submit it, that would be appreciated, okay?
We really appreciate your.
Thank you.
Diligence.
Yep. Just the pages don't add up.
Thank you.
And there are inconsistencies and errors.
Appreciate your time.
Can I copy this for me? Because I handwrote it from 3:00 this morning. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn, thank you. And what Betty said, they're all right-of-way issues, and it's a homeowner's responsibility. Time to clean it up now.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. We will next proceed with the staff reports, starting with Cory.
Good morning, Chair, board members. Cory O'Forman, Town engineer. This is the development plan review for the home at 3 Hudson Avenue. A new two-story, single-family residence, including five bedrooms, five full baths, two half baths, a three-car garage, a swimming pool, and outdoor living areas. We have to review the plan for consistency with the town code, found that it does meet the zoning code requirements, recommend approval subject to planning and zoning boards review under development plan review requirements, and are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Tara, that would make you next.
Tara Bamber, Town engineer. We reviewed the plans for code compliance with the drainage code, and they do meet the code right now in their preliminary plan, but the comments are going to be addressed during building review.
So you, do you have concerns?
I do not have concerns. They're providing more exfiltration than they need to. The, like you see the comment about the Hudson swale, South Florida permit, we'll address that during, they do show a swale, so we just have to look at the grade, make sure everything is per the permit. It meets the regular, you know, what we approve during.
So that the neighbors can be reassured that the drainage impact will, this will not have an adverse drainage impact on their neighborhood?
No. It'll be the same as all the other ones, so.
Yeah.
It meets, it meets the code.
Okay.
Tara, can I ask about the right-of-way issue the previous gentleman raised? What is that issue? Has that right-of-way been blocked at one end of Hudson already, and?
So, South Florida came in, and we did a design with them for Hudson Avenue, because it's really low, and they, we did the, basically, the road has a cross-section, you know, like ground, and then edge of pavement, and then swale, right? But then it has inlets that are raised, so that the swales can populate the, you know, the water. And we say that you need to match that, that cross-section. So they are showing a swale, so during permit review, we will make sure that that matches the cross-section of that Hudson Avenue permit.
Is that the right-of-way issue, you think?
It's the right-of-way.
That he's talking about?
Hudson Avenue is.
He's talking about the back.
They're not in, they're not encouraging.
Edith Street.
They have a wall up against that back right-of-way, so they're not encouraging into that, that Edith Street lane, or Edith Road.
To the rear of the property, on the, on the south side.
Yeah, so it'll remain as is, as it is.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
May I?
Yeah. I do have a question.
Excuse me, Tara.
You mentioned Edith Road, is, is that part of the applicant's drainage plan, or is that specific to A1A?
They have a wall at their right-of-way at the back, so they're not encouraging into Edith Road, or where that drains to. I know other projects that we have done, it would drain, it drained to the west. I think it's pretty flat right now in this area, so I would have to do some more research.
So, so the site will drain to, to the Hudson swale that they'll incorporate?
The site will.
Or will it go back to the, also to the Edith drain that's presently here?
Will not go to Edith.
It will not go to Edith.
Okay, that's what I wanted, thank you.
Thank you. Manny, do you have anything to report? If, if you have something to report specifically, otherwise, I have some questions which I'll hold for after the application, but.
Other than my, my calculations, measurements, all the plans.
Come forward, say these things, okay? Say who you are.
So zoning on Super the Town and by the House and Ocean Ridge, sorry. In review of submitted plans, calculations and measurements did meet all of our zoning requirements. There were, the far might have been, in my calculations, a few square feet more than its allowable, but for the margin of error on my part, because I'm using just a regular scale ruler, where they use a, a more methodical means of measurement, that's why I provide that margin of error. So right now, I, there's some bill that meets our zoning.
Okay, so we're at least at the maximum far on this.
Okay.
Thank you. Now's the opportunity for the applicant to take us through the application and answer questions.
I didn't study, so. Good morning, my name is Richard Bermer, I'm with Obus Homes, I'm designing the house for Bella Homes, and glad to be here. Try to be, us, you know, conscientious as possible with the environment and what we're trying to do, and I definitely, you know, I agree with a lot of comments of, you know, the neighbors and, and what you're trying to do with the town, et cetera. But to start, I mean, very excited to build in this area. I worked in Ocean Ridge many years ago, and it's been always a lot of fun to do things here. As a matter of fact, all the way at the end of the street, we did a project many years ago. Anyway, we're designing here, us, you probably have seen, you know, a 5,300 AC square foot house, five bedrooms, with three-car garage, and a modern, you know, more of a modern star house. And trying to, you know, looking at the surroundings and the new projects that are coming in, and trying to keep everything as, you know, as efficient as possible and minimal the, you know, requirements. We have to sign this house with garage being at the front, and then, you know, the most of the house, the bottom of the house, towards the back, so we don't have that big impact towards the street. It's, as you can see, you know, from the site plans, I you probably have seen, we have this, all this lower elevation on the front of the house where the garages are and the motorcoats, so you can park your additional cars and everything, and then we have this gradual step-up with planters and step, and, you know, one-story volumes towards the two-story element of the house in the back. one-story volumes towards the two-story element of the house in the back. As Manny said, yes, originally when we submitted, we were a couple of, you know, fractions off over the requirements. We reduced the size of the house and as a matter of fact, as far as the lot coverage were, you know, 6% below the requirement. Our FAR, we write, you know, at the amount of FAR that that would be, you know, AC space plus garage square footage. So in that sense, we're trying to meet and, you know, make it, like I said at the beginning, as efficient as possible and understanding the surroundings that we're trying, you know, we're trying to fit here, looking at the houses around ourselves and at the end of the street on Ocean Avenue, et cetera, trying to meet the today's market plus the the town requirements and using the guidelines that you gave us and meeting with the staff of the the town to, you know, do hopefully a nice project for you and, you know, to get something nice from all this. It's sort of that is, you know, my approach. I don't want to go through all the plans. You already have seen the plans and renderings and and everything. So I hope, you know, everything is good with you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Just a little question. Your letterhead says Opus Homes, Design and Engineer. Are you a licensed architect?
No, we have a licensed architect that works at our office with design engineering and Opus Homes. I am an architect, but not licensed. So I'm from my you can see from my accent, I'm from another country.
That's all right. Most of us are.
Yeah. So you're back here already?
Yes.
And loving it.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, questions?
One simple question. In your remarks, you said you referred to as a 5,300 square foot house.
The air conditioning space is 5,300, 5,366, I believe it is. The air conditioning, that's not camping garages or logas or balconies.
Maybe I'm looking at outdated page 21 or 46. It says 5,700 AC and 5,700 and 6,200 floor.
Or it might be, I'm trying to read from my small print here, so.
This is page 21 or 48.
No, I think you're reading the right information. That's what's in. Now Manny would be the one to ask. On that, but we're gonna have Danny back.
Okay.
I've got several questions on Danny's sheets.
Fine, thank you.
Can we take a look at the front elevation of the house?
Sure.
I'm a little struggling with this. Building should be designed and enhanced to enhance the surrounding neighborhood in harmony with the architectural styles. This is this is quite quite massive in scale. And I'm not I'm not an architect, you know, or been on this commission for six years and what I've learned is there are many styles that can be successful in the community. But there are style elements that work and don't work to make better design. And I sat here for five of those six years with an excellent architect, Mark Marsh, who who is much better equipped than me to make those comments and and make nudges and suggestions to applicants. Because we have to remember, you're you're here for a short period of time. But we the impact on this neighborhood lasts for 20, 30, 50 years. And in driving the neighborhood this morning, this didn't feel like it was in harmony with the neighborhood. It has a metal roof. There are other metal roof houses, some one-story and some two-story. But none of them have taken the site and used every inch of the site to the maximum to put a home as this is. And, you know, it concerns me that this isn't in harmony with the neighborhood. And and I'm hoping maybe there's some things you could do that to make some improvements. I took liberty to speak to Mark Marsh and asked him to be here. He said he unfortunately had a conflict this morning. He also lives on Hudson, so is I think his comments are as good as any of the other neighbors. And and here's some suggestions he made about the elevations of the house. He thinks the second floor ceiling height should be lowered to match and they shouldn't match the ground floor because that's making more mass and height to the house. So the overall scale needs to be reduced. The gable elements at the left side is out of proportion with the rest of the facade. And the clear story window over the second on the second floor over the front door should be reduced as well as on the south facade. And then lastly, and this is important for the neighbors, is the two-story west wall needs some interruptions. Right now, it's pretty much a sheer wall with 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 windows in it. And, you know, you could do some fenestration through there or some other elements. It's going to be my recommendation. Rest of the board has to agree that we ask for a deferral here on your application and give you another month to make this more in harmony with the neighborhood. Not saying throw the design out. We're saying to take and look at these design elements. And one last design element that I missed off of what Mr. Marsh shared with me is that and I confirmed this in the community that the that all the other homes there with the metal roofs are gray roof, some variation of gray or silver. And I believe you're recommending a black roof.
It's a dark gray.
Yeah. Maybe you could pick it up a little on the scale. That's those are some easy concessions to make in the neighborhood and certainly won't make the the marketability to house any less. And I believe if some of these things are incorporated in, you will have a more marketable, a better home that fits the neighborhood and serve your purposes too. And these aren't costly things. These are some some things that just can lead to. Beg your pardon. And I and I and I he again apologizes he couldn't be here because he is a neighbor and will be and have an impact on it as as all the other neighbors who you saw spoke. And I think they've taken time to do diligence and and in six years on this commission, this is the most neighborhood opposition I've ever seen here on a on a morning meeting where it's difficult for people to come. So we should be attuned to that as commissioners and you as the applicant, because you want to be a good neighbor.
Yep. Yeah, and just I'm basically the only I can say, you know, I take it, you know, very positive the remarks from Mr. Marsh, you know, from the board. And we're gonna look into it. We're gonna look into also, you know, guidelines and meet with the staff to make sure that we're complying with, you know, the design guidelines and the recommendations from the board, for sure.
Other commissioners, you have questions for the applicant?
Comments?
Yes, I do. Yeah. My first impression when I saw this is it has more like a commercial element to it than it does a residential. I can't tell you specifically. Maybe it has to do with the vertical fenestration on the one-two-story wall that just looks like a penitentiary to me. I mean, it just doesn't seem it just doesn't feel good facing the street.
I've seen it from the inside, so I don't know how they look from the outside.
But also the.
You're talking about the tall structure to the left of the front door.
Yes, yes. And then, well, yeah, I won't. And then the I guess that would be the north elevation of the garage. There's there's no windows at all there. And I thought every design we have before has windows.
It's tucked behind that palm tree.
Oh, come on. Oh, that's it?
But it's another vertical, as you would say.
It's basically an imitation on the wall, so it's not a blank wall. The idea is to create that extra texture with a different color, so you create a little bit.
It comes off as a commercial building to me on this elevation as well.
That's a beautiful.
So, yeah, I would totally agree and I'd like to have my office there, but it doesn't belong on that site.
Yeah. Just as, you know, I said, note on that, and, you know, we looked a little bit around the area, not well, specifically at the end of, you know, Hudson Avenue, there's a few houses also with, you know, parapet walls. We were trying to bring the element of the parapet walls, take it away a little bit from the hip roofs. That's why we brought in the parapet walls, like you see at the end of Hudson or Coconut or different areas or flat roofs and things like that, to break it down a little bit more. And the parapet itself is, you know, a big blank, you know, triangular piece on the top with just some windows. We wanted to add the extra detail of making that recess, changing the color and material so it becomes a little bit more suitable and then break it a little bit more so it doesn't feel like a big blank wall. That is a reason. And yes, on the rendering, unfortunately, the one on the garage doesn't is covered by a by a palm tree. But if you look at the actual elevation, we have the same element repeated from the two-story element. In addition, the two-story element is back about, you know, 55 feet from the front of the from the property and from the street. There's actually an extra probably 76 feet, 765 feet from the front of the from the street side. So it's that is all the way back. It's not that that two-story volume, you know, is all the way on the front, right? On your face.
Well, the positives are, I think there's adequate parking, which I think is good. Looks like at a minimum, there's six, no, probably.
Yeah, we have.
Probably have some car lifts in the garage. It's adequate to accommodate those, you would say. But I also agree on the front elevation with the two-story gabled-in window design. It just seems pretty massive to me for this area, so that's all.
You have too many beautiful views, so that's why we have to.
I don't I don't know too many people are gonna be up at that, how they're gonna get up there unless they can fly to see out that window, so.
Yeah. Well, the thing is that, you know, the architectural reason for that is to bring that light and the airness to the living area of the house.
I understand.
Thank you. Excellent comments.
When I compare the perspective on page P6, which is the rendering, and it's partially just a perspective issue, I think. But I bet when you're actually on-site, your eye would have a similar perspective. That's why perspectives are drawn. That garage is just massive beyond the need or the attractiveness. When I look at page P4, I see that the top of the garage actually doesn't reach the roof line. But of course, if you look at the rendering on P6, it certainly is very high. So I'm asking, is there any functionality for the prospective occupant of a garage that's this tall? It has the normal height garage doors. Then it has a row of windows. Then it has a 45-degree angle roof which goes up high. Or would it be possible without reducing functionality to lower the height? To add the windows as Mr. Marsh, sorry, Baptiste was suggesting you have more windows on the front to break it up, take out that row of clear-story windows above the garage or something that would make it less massive and more residential?
Yeah, the size of the garage. One is to be able to have the storage.
I'm not talking about the square footage.
Yeah, yeah, it's the the miles of the garage. One is is it was a little bit to bring, you know, the consistency of all those parapets throughout the house. Can it be lower? Yes, it might look a little bit too squat for the rest of the house, what's going on in the back.
Would a hip roof on the end, you're using hip roof elsewhere on that end of the house using a hip roof on the garage would certainly take a lot away from that wall.
Yeah, that definitely is gonna soften that that garage, getting the same height, but with the hip roof. It's gonna take a little bit away from the probably the design features of having those parapets. I was thinking maybe, you know, we go away from the parapet on the big windows in the center so we can reduce a little bit the glass there. But yeah, it's something that I can be studying. Because the back also, we have the small parapet and the, you know, two-story parapet on the left side as well. So that's why we're trying to maintain that consistency. On the sides, we do have the hip roof, so it blends more with the side properties.
Well, the the consistency of the garage with the back seems irrelevant because you'll never see both at the same time. Sorry, I didn't I didn't have my mic off. The consistency doesn't seem to be to be relevant because you will never see the back and the garage.
At the same time.
We'll ever see them at the same time.
Yeah, physically, it's impossible.
Good comments. Thank you, Roger. Do you have any others?
No.
We really appreciate you being here.
Oh, thank you.
I'd just like to say in the comment about the feeling very commercial. There's no break, no line break in the in the sheer walls. I don't know, almost all the dimensions here. The can the can the cars actually make these turns, these radiuses? Have you ever done a a car movement into these garages straight in? I mean, as they move in, can they take an immediate right, immediate right, immediate right? Can they get into these garages?
The first one is a little bit higher, but those are white.
Have you done this? Have you done an actual or a car radius movement onto that? So you can see actually what it does and doesn't, does not do?
We mean with the width of the driveway?
No, I didn't ask you that. I asked you if you've actually if you've actually taken a, you know, a template and seen if you could get a car in there like that.
No, I didn't take a template.
Okay, because it just it just it looks it looks super tight from that perspective. In addition, you know, if we're not really, we're I know we're talking about the the house. We haven't talked a lot about the landscape. I see you've got a lot of landscape, but certainly you'd like to see. You get the feeling that based on what you're seeing here, there are going to be a lot of cars in the driveway area. And you'd like to see some planting that would be a little higher to kind of to to separate the cars from the from the road. I think it's one of the things we should be looking at more so in some of these applications here because the low hedge you have, I mean, no one wants to see a car really from the road, the reality. So, you know, the planting that you see there that you're, you know, could it not be, you know, four feet or, you know, some some level of planting that would kind of, you know, soften the car from the road to the house? And again, you've got a seat, you know, your rendering's here, you've got a landscape plant here attached which has it looks like a massive amount of landscape and which is great. I think it's something we always talk about here. But I'd just like to see, I feel the houses we're seeing here, you know, if you have the ability to 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 screen from some way or another the the cars from the road, that would be that would be fantastic. But I just think it looks, just what fellow commissioner said, it just looks really, really, really commercial.
I will.
Thank you.
I will compliment you, I think, for page sheet number five of five where you show temporary silt fencing. One of your your neighbors, prospective neighbors, did ask whether there was going to be protection from dirt and debris. Your plan shows silt fencing, I believe, all the way around. And when would that be put in?
That's before construction.
Well, I was confused by the 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 comment from the public. I didn't understand what was there? Is there been something put on the lot at this point?
Yes.
There were there were vehicles on the lot this last week. Is that correct?
What was the purpose of the, I mean, was there silt valve fencing up? Is there is there anything that's going on that I didn't I didn't understand that, to be honest with you?
No, they were dumping dirt already. Dump trucks were already lining up and there was no fencing. And then they're lining up, you know, on our street.
Okay. Did we have the applicant step up and you have to come to the mic and introduce who you are and what?
Steve Patrissi, Bella Homes. So that was that was just dropped off from another prior site that we're working on, Temporelli, that we moved the next day, the next morning when we heard about it. So it was removed, there's no dirt there anymore. So that won't happen anymore.
Because you certainly have heard that that you've got off on a bad foot with the neighbors.
We'll make it right, though, so.
Have to address them and say, we're gonna be good neighbors and we're gonna stay offside if we have to.
Six, one, oh, seven, we're doing another project and we broke ground, so everything is parking is under control. So we do have the site. Six, one, oh, seven, we're doing another project and we broke ground, so everything is, parking is under control, so we do have the sites and neighbors who understand.
Yeah, you, you're certainly facing a backlash from others that had gone before you and especially.
I've been in front of you guys before, so.
But, but I'm talking about homes that have, the builders that haven't done a good job and how they've done the staging and have been, had negative impact. So there's, they're gonna look twice as carefully at you and you're gonna have to do twice as good a job, and that's the reality of it.
It'll be a superintendent every day there, double-checking, making sure.
Thank you. Stephen?
Questions?
I guess.
You're good. Okay, thank you. You, you missed your public comment. We're making, because it's you, Terry.
Well, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I didn't realize that you were shutting it off. Uh, you should have made it clear. But anyway, one of the things that I was, um, concerned about is the back Edith Street. Is, is the retaining wall three feet back from the right of way? That's, used to be a requirement that the walls had to be at least three feet from, uh, the property line. So that's a, a draining issue, and I don't know about the requirements for the sidewalls. They also used to have to be three feet back from the property line, and that became part of the drainage system.
Yeah, I, I can't answer your question, but I can assure you that, uh, Tara is very diligent about watching those elements.
She's listening right now.
Yeah, so she's.
The other thing, I'm glad Mr. Faber brought up, um, landscaping. Uh, we had a house built in our neighborhood that was six thousand square feet, had no trees, all palms. Now, I'm not prejudiced totally against these Sylvester palms, but they make the building look a lot more commercial and a lot more formal. This board ought to insist on having more native trees. There's lots of different shade trees that can, that, that house that I'm talking about in our neighborhood is now softened up because the trees and the shrubs are beginning to fill in. And it was because I complained.
No, and, and you're, you're right, and I'm glad you brought that up. Is it near, never a meeting went by that, uh, that Mark Marsh didn't ask that the applicant put a shade tree on the front of the house? And, uh, he, Roger knows, he, he sat here, and we'd asked that you do the same, is that, uh, look for a shade tree in the front of the house. It, it has a nice neighborhood impact.
Shopping mall.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I just say one thing? So I think I can help with the design.
Public comments closed. I'm sorry, we're got to.
I'm sorry.
You, um, I think there's a highly likelihood this is gonna be deferred till next month, and you'll have a public comment opportunity then. Thank you. Manny, I have some questions. Can we put up, um, P one, uh, the, this is the overall first floor plan and site plan?
Do you want to copy?
Go ahead.
Right there. That's what, yeah. You've got the big plates. In, in your calculations, there's elements that I'm not, not clear on. To the rear of the property, so up at the top left-hand side of the drawing, there's, uh, a loggia. Uh, it includes a summer kitchen, a bar area, and a cabana bath. So, um, a, a, a pretty significant amount of square footage there. Is that calculated in your FAR?
Hello? In the calculation for the fourth, that was. No, that is not calculated in the FAR.
Including the cabana bath?
Including the cabana bath.
Was excluded from your FAR?
Yes, it was.
And, and why would that be?
Well, uh, habitable space and AC, the only thing that count, that counts is the, uh, habitable space, AC, and garage for the FAR.
So the garage, the garage is part of the FAR, but a cabana bath, which is an enclosed space, is not part of the FAR?
Well, best of my knowledge, no. I had to re, read the definition on there, but, uh, I don't, I don't see that as part of being at the FAR at this time.
Air-conditioned.
So, so, yeah, I, I don't know what habitable means, but you, you could take a lot of elements out if you've said they're not habitable. So, um, so, and then, so then the, to the, uh, left side at the bottom, there's also a master porch, and that is not included in the FAR.
No, I didn't include that in the FAR.
And then on, uh, the next P two's drawing, you have a fully, uh, roofed-in roof terrace, partially walled, uh, and that's not part of the FAR?
Roof terrace, no, it's not.
Because that, and that has a roof over it, right?
Yeah, roof terrace, yes.
And, and it's got, uh, it's got a wall there on, whatever, that's the west side of the house. So it's, it's, these are kind of semi rooms, aren't they, with kitchens and, and, uh, places to put your TVs and furniture and bar stools and, but, but we're not, there, an opportunity to put more square footage on the site without, without counting against our codes.
No, nothing prevents them from doing that after that. I mean, a, any new construction after it's done already, for that matter, any existing home, they can alter and be non-conforming, uh, after the fact, but right now what I have.
You have to pull a building permit, and so you can't be non-conforming.
You could sneak it later, but, you know, you can sneak it. We could all sneak everything there. You know, everybody likes to sneak in that, but it's getting caught, doing that, you're in, you're in trouble.
That's why we have, we have good neighbors as well.
Yeah, usually a neighbor, it's, you call when you're closing your back cover patio and say, hey.
I guess if the garage were a carport, is that part of the FAR?
If the car, if the garage is a carport?
Mr. Chairman, um, if I may, um, I can read to you the definition of floor area in the town code for purposes of calculating floor area ratio. And that is, uh, floor area total is used for calculating floor area ratio means the gross horizontal areas of all floors of all buildings on a lot, measured from the exterior face of exterior walls or other type of enclosure, or from the center line of a wall separating two buildings, including garages, carports, and porticochets, but not including basements, attics, unless used as living space, unenclosed decks or patios, covered porches, balconies, covered or uncovered, or crawl spaces.
It doesn't make sense to me that a car, carport or a porticochet goes against the FAR, and this element, you know, a semi-enclosed area doesn't go against the FAR. I mean, it's what, you read it, but then that's, I think, I think it's something for this commission should give real thought to, because what we're ending up with is maximize the house to the FAR, and then add as much as you can to where you get to the lot coverage maximum.
That, that's, I'm, unfortunately, that's just the way we work.
And that's what's going on, right?
Unfortunately, well, unfortunately for the residents that are concerned, yes, that is exactly what's going on. But your, this issue can be addressed next month at, um, staff meeting, they were gonna have.
Workshop.
It could be something that could be brought up to put into the books and we can alter and stop.
Because this is fairly new, that we are seeing these elements like this that are, they're, uh.
Well, I, I, what I've been seeing is that, uh, builders now paying a high, high price for the lot are doing this. They're maximizing what they can get for, uh, the pro, the property owner.
And, and the, and the neighborhood takes consequences of that.
Exactly.
If you look.
I don't have any control, and then I have to follow what the zoning ordinance are, and if that's what they need, then I have to allow.
Just following up on, on your questions on P seven, when you look at the, uh, both the upper and the lower picture, the color picture, that bathroom is a fully enclosed habitable area. By that definition, it has to be included in the FAR.
Which one?
Yeah, the cabana bath.
The cabana bath. That has to be included. That, it's got four walls, it's got a ceiling, it has everything.
Well, he included it, and I didn't include it.
And you have more.
That's why I was over it a little bit. That's what.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You, you didn't include it.
I did not know.
And your number is higher than his number that he says included it.
Right.
So there's a real calculation discrepancy.
It's about two hundred, two, two hundred and fifty or so square feet that don't vary up. If you include the cabana bath in his calculation compared to your fifty-seven sixteen, that's, they're, they're fifty-six. I forgot, what was your number? What was your number?
The FAR?
Yeah, your FAR.
One second, I think. The total FAR is six thousand two hundred and two, thirty-five point nine percent.
So I would suggest that, that, uh, it would be appropriate for Manny to add the, the bathroom area to his calculations, then share his calculations with the applicant, and then it's incumbent on the applicant to demonstrate where yours are wrong because of your measurement tools, rather than for you to assume that he's right.
Well, I, I.
Yeah, I, I give you a lot of credit, and I said, yours are the right ones until shown otherwise.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always gonna go with Manny's numbers first, because he works for us.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Manny.
You know, Manny, I've got, uh, some questions on the actual data sheets. The first one's a comment, I think in the past, and maybe this is just unique to this application. We get your numbers and their numbers on one sheet, um, much better than have to flip the page. So please, in the future, get it, yeah, get, get it on the side-by-side. And you can, a lot of these questions, you'll get fewer questions if they're all side-by-side. Then, then I have some, just some questions as educating, and I, uh, oh, the next comment is, is I, I really like where it has, um, the actual numbers of what they are in the code written in. So you've handwritten in floor area ratio thirty-six percent, lot coverage set thirty-five percent. Can we just get that on the permanent sheet that we give the applicant, that it comes through and it's right there all the way down? For, even if there's one that doesn't apply, front covered balcony didn't apply here, but has what those percentages are. So, I mean, we're all volunteers here, you know, Stevens, uh, works with this every day, the rest of us don't. Um, so get, help us, uh, make it easier, and we'll have fewer questions for you.
Not that I mind, Rick.
Then now, just some term, you have, uh, at the top, floor area ratio thirty for six percent, and then later on the page, total floor area thirty-eight point seven percent. What's the difference?
Well, your total floor area, I, I include now, uh, the, uh, other part of the, um, uh, AC, un-AC areas such as the loggia and all that, that's all floor.
Okay, that, that's helpful. And then the other one says lot coverage maximum thirty-five, and then down below it says building footprint. Uh, what's the difference between a lot coverage and a building footprint?
Uh, nothing. Is there a difference? What, what my difference?
Uh, yeah, you have twenty-eight point eight percent calculated on lot coverage and on building footprint thirty-six.
Lot coverage and building. I have to, can I take a look at this real quick?
Yeah, it, this, this isn't gonna change anything today. This is more helping this commission do their job better, and you giving us the information that makes it.
Oh, I apologize on that.
Yeah, and.
No apologies.
Yeah, no apologies. You, you've answered questions well. Thank you. We, we appreciate you a lot. Thank you. Thank you, Manny. Any other commissioner comments before we make a motion? I, I'd like to make a motion to, um, excuse me. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we ask the applicant to, uh, that we defer this application to the next meeting, and the applicant takes into account the comments that have been made here, uh, and the neighbors' comments, and, uh, does their best to meet their objectives as well as meet the neighbors' objectives. And if they come into conflict, I defer to the neighbors. These are people who have to live with this. Uh, you'll sell your home and go on, and these are, these are elements that, uh, incorporated in, uh, I think will make it a better, more sellable home. So, uh, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, one point. Kelly, when would the resubmission have to be made if they're gonna make changes to this proposed design?
That's been a problem in the past, and sometimes it takes the two meetings away.
Right, so I just wanna make sure, because if they don't meet, you know, staff's deadline to then sort of re-review, then they might have to get pushed to the next meeting.
I'll change.
I want to, I want the motion to consider the fact that if the applicant's gonna make changes, it may have to be a subsequent meeting.
Well, I'll change my motion to, uh, defer the applicant, application to when the applicant can, uh, bring a revised application forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
Second.
Any comment? All in favor?
I.
I.
Like post? None. Thank you very much. You have a nice applic, application. I know you wanna be good neighbor. And you have, please.
If I can be on record on this, because I understand, you know, the design perspective as far as, you know, volume, windows, and, you know, the, the, the style of a picture, but also we have a guideline as far as the, you know, lot coverage and FARs and ratios between first floor and second floor and amount of green space. And those are all numbers that we have to follow, that we try, you know, we have to meet those numbers, and we use those as guidelines. And, and if you can see by, let's take as a, you know, the numbers are meeting all the requirements. Might be a few square feet here or there that we have to clarify, and we're gonna present the diagram showing all the square footage, and I'm gonna meet with Manny to go over all that. But technically, this house currently is meeting all those design numbers. They, they, the allowable numbers that the city is giving me to design a house for the first story, one-car garage, for the two-story volume, uh, for the finished floor elevation, for square footage, et cetera. So I'm meeting those numbers. So it's, I guess i- i- it's hard for me to design something that, okay, don't follow the numbers, follow something that we don't know. But I need to base our design.
You have to follow the numbers. Every applicant that comes in for us, e- e- every home that's built in this town complies with those, so that.
Exactly, so that's why I wanna make sure of that.
We are much more focused on these design elements, uh, which you saw in the staff report that are part of our code, because if, if we didn't have that portion, if it was purely the numbers, we wouldn't have Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah.
So the purpose of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to help have community standards met and to meet these other elements, uh, and, uh, nudge you. Occasionally, we'll pick up something, but there's very seldom that we find a drainage issue that Tara's missed, uh, that, that we find the FAR wrong that Manny's missed. It just doesn't happen. What we want is harmony in design, uh, with the community, and each street's different. There's a lot of one-story homes here. You've gotta take, take, take that into account. You're not gonna build a one-story, but soften the design. Make it, make it fit. Be a good neighbor.
Thank you. Thank you.
That wasn't for me.
Would you like the comments that I spoke of from Mark Marsh? And I'm sure he wouldn't mind a phone call, so.
Okay. Can we make a copy of that, please?
Yep.
Make a copy, please.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So that concludes the quasi-judicial hearing and we have now an opportunity for commission comments. Does anyone have any?
Yeah, I'd like to just, the applicant here, Bella Holmes, and I don't want to be subjective in this, but certainly where I live is, has caused a problem in my community, right? And has done things inappropriately over a long period of time. And just recently, some little improvement's been made. But as terms of our workshop, I think we got to talk about this, right? We've got to talk about, I mean, in Palm Beach and, and you know, Stephen up there, you know, there we're talking with, you're hearing the community again, we've heard it time and time again, the cars, the traffic, et cetera. Up there, they have very stringent ways of dealing with this, right? And maybe we should look at some of our neighboring towns and communities to try to figure out what they're doing because they're dealing with, and I'm sure Palm Beach has gone overboard, the town of Palm Beach. I'm sure it's got, it's just crazy. But we do have a park right across the street. I'm sure that there's been staging over there over the years where during the day, the weekdays, no one's over there. The park is rarely used for the whole week, right? Maybe they could stage some of the construction workers there and bring them over to the site, right? And, and I just think we need to review that further because it's something we've heard time and time again, especially in the smaller streets on the, on the south side of the town. And, and our workshop should talk about this and we should talk to the commissioners about this because this is extremely important. And you hate to hear a resident enduring what they've endured. I mean, I would go crazy, right? And, and I know, I apologize. We feel terrible. That shouldn't be, constructions are paying and you know what, but it shouldn't be to the point where it disrupts your life.
When you have to move to Baton Rouge.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's nice.
Or do anything. And my concern is with this applicant saying he's going to take care of things, well, he hasn't shown his inability to take care of things, right? And his track record doesn't lay out what he says, I'm going to put a superintendent on site, no problems, right? I think we need to take things further than that, other members, the planning, zoning and the commission. We need to look at this thoroughly, right? Because cannot disrupt people's lives to that level. And the second is, Rick, thank you very much for your time here. We've learned a lot from you and I've only been here for a year or so.
Year.
Yep. And you've been a great leader and shown us a lot of good things to think about, good ideas, you know, your approach to the whole process being fair to these applicants, but also the yin and yang with the, the community is fantastic. So I want to thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And any other commission comments?
Yes. So we have this workshop coming up and I know there are a number, I'm assuming there are a number of agenda items or topics to be discussed on it. And I'm wondering, one or the two that we discussed at this meeting, one FAR calculations and then, you know, how we deal with staging and dealing with contractors that aren't really being good neighbors. Will those be on that list?
Well, let's keep growing. Keeps growing.
I'm sure the FAR is, I don't remember, construction staging.
So my next question is, hopefully those, these items are on that list, but can we get an advanced copy of what the list has right now or do we have it available?
I do have it in ready.
But, but just the topics?
There's like 16 topics.
Because I'd like to have an opportunity to see where I prioritize them and then when I come to the meeting, I can be a little bit more efficient with my other members, commissioners.
I would see if I can do this out.
Thank you.
Roger?
You know, I've been unable to attend a lot of meetings, but every meeting I attended, you've done an excellent job. You and everything that you said, you are so fair. You addressed the applicants with politeness, with directness, clarity, and yet you stand up for the town at the same time, so it's not a confrontation, but seeking to get the right answer and thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Anything else? I just wanted to make one comment because I think this application kind of falls in line with that is that, you know, for many years, we've had the same code levels and maximums, but it's only been in the last couple of years that we've seen applications that do everything right to the limits of those, of those. And it is probably the norm we should expect. We, maybe we should have expected it when we adopted the FAR we now have and the coverage, lot coverage ratios that we now have. But I read in the Coastal Star that both Gulfstream and Delray are in the process of setting upper limits on home sizes. And I think it's something that should be on that agenda for the workshop. I don't think it's something that you'll resolve right away. It's, this is not an easy change. It may even require a grandfathering change. You can't expect this applicant to, to suddenly have to downsize because we changed the code mid-stream on them. But I think that we're seeing the character of the town change in ways that I think most of the people that live here and the town commission isn't, isn't in their vision for what the town is. And if that requires lowering the FAR with the assumption that, you know, every bit of it's going to be used, that's going to be the case. It just used to not be that way. They used, but you're not the first application that's been right to the, you know, designed to the limits. I, I used to be a developer. He's, he's a developer. He's, you know, we, he's a builder. We, we understand the economics of it, but we're here, sit as a commission to look out for the best interest of this town. So, you know, that, that's something that the future commission's going to have to address or the character of the town will, will change. And I thank you very much. I want to especially thank Lynn, Christie, Kelly, Cory, Tara and Manny because this is, I sit on several boards, but this is the most pleasant to sit on because the staff does the work and allows us to do our job and I really very much appreciate that. I appreciate you Shields, Stephen and Mark, Roger and Sidney, who's not here. You've been wonderful commissioners to be with and I feel very comfortable that moving forward, this commission's in good hands. So thank you very much. With that, I'll call the meeting adjourned.
And citizen participation, you also appreciate that.